Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, I'd like to call the Agricultural, Agricultural Commission regular meeting to order. Second item we're going to discuss will be the scheduled appointments, the seven o'clock appointment with Tanya and Jenna on the update of the community garden.
Sounds good to me. I don't know, Jenna and Tanya, did you have a presentation? I know Leslie had circulated the document that you had sent us, the summary. So I, I guess, Mr. Chairman, did you just want them to give us an update?
Yes, and then after that, I guess we can ask Pat to give her input on what she wanted to talk about at this meeting. Might as well do her right after, you know, Tanya and Jenna give their update.
Sounds good.
So if you want, I can get started. I'm hoping that everybody on the board did receive a copy of our new update and map.
Yes.
Okay. So basically, after the survey was done, looking at the property and hearing some concerns from members of, you know, the BOS and the Agricultural Commission about there possibly could possibly be a new library on that land and having to worry, some people worried about the garden being in the way or maybe in the future having to be moved. So looking at the new boundaries of the property, we decided to push the garden to the far right-hand back corner. And we've also changed the shape from sort of like having all of these separate areas to just a big rectangle. So this is going to cut down the perimeter, which is going to cut down our fencing costs and still give us a really good amount of land to, to garden it. So we have devised a space with eight four by eight raised beds and two mounded ground cover gardens that are approximately twenty by twenty each. This also provides a straight path back from one of the parking areas on that property for accessibility. So, you know, once you would get out of your car, if that were a handicap parking spot, you'd be able to just walk straight back into the garden. So as far as the updates, as Tanya said, we did move everything back. We came up with a much smaller area to start the garden in. As far back on the property as we could push it, we kept it six and a half feet, I believe it is, from the back boundary marker. And I believe it is. One second. Moved it quite a ways away from the stone wall that abuts the town hall property. I want to say I think that might have been about twenty-some feet, maybe forty feet away from that, that wall. Just some of the things that we want to do. So when Tanya and I spoke with Brett about it, we really wanted to keep the project going, but we are hoping to take 2021 to collect our materials, get through our town meetings and our commission meetings as well as be able to, you know, get the additional approvals that we'll need for the garden, as well as to start setup and construction of the garden to be ready to plant for twenty, spring of 2022. We still do need to reach out to Mr. Ferry and Mr. Aguirre regarding the water source because we did move the garden back a significant amount. So that's going to require, it's still going to require the frost proof hydrant, but we definitely are going to have to reach out to them to get additional details on, you know, a timeline of when we can possibly get that frost hydrant installed and where they might want to situate it on the property with the regards to a possible library being there. We also have suggestions from Mr. Ferry as far as materials pending approval on the donation. Not sure if it's town materials would be considered a donation, but Mr. Ferry has quite a stockpile of wood chips as well as composted material, but he does suggest that we have the materials in the soil tested for purity standards before we attempt to use them for the garden. So that's something else that we have to work on and get some of that tested and done this year as well. Also, as far as the donations and materials, once we get us, you know, a fix on what the highway department may have pending approval, we can reach out even further to see, you know, what we'll actually need as far as square footage on the remainder of materials. The only set thing that I know we will need is our boards and nails for the eight garden beds. But again, we cut the garden down significantly for the first year. So I don't see that being a huge cost expense at the moment. Mr. Ferry also had some fencing for us to use as well. I think that's going to be a lot more manageable with the garden that, you know, we've readjusted to what we have now. As you said, Mrs. Gales here, I did have in the notes on the update that the Historical Commission has reached out to us to rename the garden, the James Briggs Community Garden, which I think is a wonderful idea. You know, to give some homage to the property, they also are looking.
Jenna, you accidentally muted.
For the property, did you hear my phone ring in? Sorry. They want to look into a sign or plaque for the garden as well, which I think is also a great idea. And I look forward to working with them on getting that all set up and making that a really quality piece for the garden itself as far as presentation wise, because I really want everybody to know the historical significance of the property. It was a huge, huge deal, that house.
Jenna, can I ask you a question about your reasonable plan to start smaller than what you had intended?
Do you mind if I just get through the updates first?
Nope, not at all.
Thank you. So the Disabilities Commission, I wanted to actually ask you guys about this at the end. The Disabilities Commission would like to put it together in advisory group to provide guidance on the garden project. Tanya and I have spoke at length about the, you know, I guess, accessibility to the garden, which was part of the reason, you know, another reason why we thought moving it back and kind of scaling it down a little bit would be a good idea. Because some of the recommendations that they have for us are extremely pricey and extensive. So I wanted to possibly touch on that. We do plan on meeting in March with the Board of Selectmen to give them our update as well and meeting with the Disabilities Commission in April to discuss their advisory group as well as possible timelines and extra guidance as far as how we can try to meet their accommodations in our timeline or if, you know, we can at least meet some of those and kind of get up the rest next year. So as Tanya said, we went there, we took measurements. There, the property was cleared, but there is a lot of debris still left on the property. I don't know if that's another thing that I should reach out to Mr. Ferry to, or if we have to get approval from any of the boards or commissions regarding clearing out the rest of the debris on the property. It looks like where we, after clearing everything out, there is some unevenness to the garden area as well as no paths to get to the garden area. So I don't know if that's an option for us to get that a little more leveled out without kind of being too invasive to the property itself.
I'm sorry, there are just some piles of bricks, there's some piles of stones, and there's some piles of roots and stuff. So it just kind of needs to be like, you know, taken away and definitely leveled. It's not very level right now.
Yep. Okay, that was my update. Go Brett.
So we can definitely, so first of all, let me back up, I'm sorry. I just wanted to seriously thank Tanya and Jenna for not just the work that you're doing, but just the willingness to keep everyone updated. I know it's greatly appreciated by me. I'm sure it's appreciated by the commission. We can definitely talk to Mr. Ferry about removing the excess debris that's been left on the property. You know, people do things quickly, so they were probably focused on removing like the trees. And so you know how it is, like you may not look back and see, you know, the shred, shavings or whatever debris branches that are left. So we definitely talked to him about that. And I think we definitely should talk to him about the leveling because if it's not level, that poses additional problems for ADA compliance. So we want to get ahead of those things. So we can definitely have that conversation with him. My only other question, Jenna, was just, I agree, it's a good idea to start with a smaller footprint. Once we have a better idea of what may go there or how big it's going to be or just have more details, is it possible to scale the garden up once it's been established?
Oh, my God, of course, yeah.
I asked that as like, you know, I'm ignorant.
Yeah, this, our simple rectangle plan leaves room for additions on to, you know, the left-hand side or coming forward, we can totally add on as we see that at any time. Absolutely.
Fabulous. That was my only question.
Yeah.
No, I, I would, you know, I really agree with Jenna. I think it's a good idea. It's well thought out the way she's taking this on. Creep before you walk and then, then you walk, then you run. And, you know, if you do it one, two or three phases, I think that is the best way of doing it. So I take my hat off to you two ladies. You've done a good job so far.
And by the way, I know Jenna, you had mentioned coming back to the Board of Selectmen. I'm just going to throw this out there. I did forward the board your update, the written update. I don't think you're required to come next month. It's always good to have visibility, meaning public visibility, so that the public is aware of what you're doing and you have that public support and outreach. You'll get volunteers and things like that. But I just don't want you to think that whenever you give an update to the ag comm, you also have to give an update to the Board of Selectmen. I'm happy to keep passing along the written documents that you're providing us.
Yeah, I just figured that if they had any additional questions like Mr. Pacheco or anything, and I know we're going to go to the Disabilities Commission as well. You know, I just want, I don't want anybody to feel like we're not representing ourselves and being open to their, you know, their suggestions and ideas that they might have. If we're not there, we might not get those.
Thank you. Yep, we're happy to have you. You know, I love your company, so.
I know you do.
You have to, that's all.
And if I could just ask a quick question, I'm a little confused as to how we need to proceed regarding the frost proof pump. What, what do we need to do to get permission, to get approvals for that and start working on that?
That's a really good question. So all that I think you need to do, since the Agricultural Commission has a budget, is send the, like, if you go and look up how much it is and, and look for a vendor or, or a supplier, whatever the, the correct word is, you can send us like a summary, I don't know what it's called, like an invoice. And then the board, the Agricultural Commission will vote to approve it.
Okay.
The invoice to purchase the hydrant. And, 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 and this is the way it works for anything, anything that we're using from the budget that they have.
And so, so we're, we're clear that the installation of this has been approved and we've done everything needed to get approvals to have it installed.
My one question is, and this is for anyone who's able to answer, who has like more technical expertise than certainly I do, what is going to be required to install it? Is this something that's simple, I, using simple in air quotes, that's simple enough that the highway department would be able to do it, or is this something we're going to need someone like a third party?
The waters, there, there is already a town water source at the pumping station on right at the north end of the property now, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So as far as I know, we wouldn't have to go for a permit with the Water District for another tap because we've got existing water service there. I think the only thing that we would have to check out is, I don't know, we would have to put a backflow device of some sort, whether it be just if we could get away with just a hose bib on that, or we would have to put a backflow on there because that is a, the frost proof hydrant drains back and I, that's something that a local plumbing inspector in town would be the guy to ask that question. That's the only issue I would see with doing the water breath.
I totally agree. So I think when we reach out, I think there was another issue that we needed to loop in Mr. Ferry and Mr. Aguirre in. We can simply work with Mr. Aguirre on this issue as well.
Yeah, that's, that's the only issue because, you know, that I would, I think there'd be any thing that we have to be concerned ourselves about as far as the rest of it, that the highway department or whoever could, you know, dig a trench and just, you know, lay the pipe and put the height on the, on the other property. That's, that's not a big, excuse me, not a big deal. Okay. Very good. Any more from either Tanya or Jenna?
No, I just think you both have just done, I mean, fat fabulous work, quick fabulous work, and I'm really proud of the work that you're doing.
They've done an excellent job.
Too kind, thank you.
You're welcome.
Where's John? I was waiting for him to ask.
John, you've been summoned, sir.
He's so quiet.
He may be muted. Oh, he's unmuted.
Don't, don't get too used to it. I'll have questions eventually.
I guess this is a good point. If, if Tanya and Pat, Tanya and Jenna want to stay and if Pat Gales is there, if she would like to come forward and make her presentation or recommendation that she has for the naming of the garden.
Okay, yeah, Ken, I'm here. How are you?
Very good, thanks, Pat.
For those that don't know, I'm the chairperson of the Historical Commission. And at our January meeting, it was suggested that the community garden be named after James Briggs since that was the site of the house, his house and his land. Within our discussion, we talked about the possibility of putting up some sort of plaque or historical marker because of the significance that his past has to Dayton. James Briggs was a captain during the Revolutionary War and his other claim to fame is he had, oh, I think ten to twelve children and one of which was George Stout-Briggs. So somehow to connect the history to the garden, to the spot we thought was kind of important because part of our focus is to make Dayton's history come alive for our citizens. At our February meeting, we talked about plaques. We don't really have an idea for a plaque yet. A lot of that will depend on the cost. And I'm sure that depends on size, where it would be placed. So this would be something that we would have to coordinate with Jenna and Tanya and the Board of Selectmen for placement so that it's always there even if another building does go there. So basically, that's it. We're, you know, willing to work with anyone to make sure that this happens for, for James Briggs' historical significance. And that's about it.
So I, I guess what, if I understand what you're saying is you'd like the Agricultural Commission to vote or endorse the naming of the garden as such, correct?
Correct.
So with that, I would entertain a motion from one of the members of the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I guess the garden is named.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. And what we'll do is we will work on getting some information on what the plaques, our markers look like and the costs, and then we'll come back to you so that everyone has some input to it. And I'll also be reaching out to Marina Santos, the town historian, for information about James Briggs and his significance too. So wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Now that we can move on to the next item, public input. Is there any public input? Okay, next order of business is old business. When I take it, Leslie is not here tonight, correct?
No, I'm sorry, I got, I couldn't get on earlier, but I'm here now.
Hey, Leslie. You were going to ask about the sharing of the screen, weren't you, Mr. Chairman? Thank God you're here, Leslie.
Okay, I guess the next order of business is a review, act and discuss on the work plan.
All right, well, I'm getting that up just to let everybody know. I did go through and kind of tried to edit it a little bit. We do have a couple of sections that I think we might have missed. Give me a second and I'll try to get it up.
Yes, I can see it.
Sorry. I'm having a lot of computer issues tonight, so I apologize. So everything looked pretty good. One section that I think we need to review is E. So I'm not sure if we missed E or, but I think it's something we should go back with. Do we want to? Is this the one that we wanted to keep and go over? Did we want to get rid of E altogether? And I tried to go back through my notes from the last time, and I want to say we were going to delete E altogether. But I didn't.
I thought that we, that's what we agreed on.
Okay, I didn't write it down and I didn't want to delete it altogether just in case. So is everyone good if we delete E?
I'm good with it. I don't know about everybody else.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then the other we want to get rid of the highlighted one that says issues relate to helicopter use, noise, pumps, pesticides, manure, odors. That was kind of
Right.
Everyone good if we get rid of that?
Yes.
And then under three, contact Dartmouth and Westport for their procedures.
Get rid of it.
And I think that was all my notes that I had. I think as far as editing goes, I mean, if someone wants to check it over to make sure that I didn't like get something that I'll delete E. But everything else is pretty, pretty good, I think.
Right.
So.
Okay. I've kind of read it over. Has everybody read it? Digested it? Everyone comfortable with it so far?
Yes.
You know, it's, I think it's probably well thought out. I mean, we, we spent on this over a year now, a year and four months, five months. With that being said, we reviewed it, we've discussed it. Everyone comfortable with bringing it up for a vote tonight?
I'm pretty comfortable. The only thing that I would say is maybe we should go through and make sure some of these goals are not out of our reach.
Okay.
That would be the only thing, if, if there's goals on here that maybe, you know, we can't even possibly attain. I know obviously some of them are going to be harder than others, but maybe we should kind of do one more quick glance at them to make sure that there's stuff that we can actually attain in the near future.
Okay. So you want to start right at the very beginning?
No, everyone can see the screen, right? Do, do we just want to kind of read through? How do you want to do it?
Contact, I mean, section A, really, there's nothing there that's section A really covered the section, section E, so that's good. B, I'm good with it. I don't know.
Like, what about creating a video clip of farming 101? Would we be able to do that? I guess we have the resources to do that.
We don't have the resources right now.
Leslie, I think, I think that we've talked about before, something that was more obtainable for us as a group was even just to start like a social media, some kind of platform for us. I think we could share some kind of farming videos on that, but for us to create a video, that's all the money that the whole group has plus probably next year's to do that as well. I don't think that's something we need to focus on or, or I don't, I personally don't feel that has to be in there at all.
I kind of agree. I think that it's kind of a huge reach for us. I don't know if we work on the wording or just take that totally out.
I would take it out, to be honest with you, and, you know, we're going to leave seek grant funding to support development.
Yep.
And hey, if that comes out of it, that's fine.
Okay, and the other question, so produce and air community cable programming, would we be able to do that?
We got the Cable Commission in town, they could do that for us. With the, you know, the mechanics of that is already here in town.
Okay, so leave that in.
Yeah, I mean, it would, we would have to contact them and actually pitch our idea and they, you know, they would do it for us if we asked them.
And I think, I mean, a lot of this stuff, as long as it's somewhat attainable, I think we should leave it in because obviously we want some higher-reaching goals in here, but I just think some of the stuff that is not even possible, we should, you know, take out. But if we want to leave that in perfectly fine, I think the rest of these on B should be pretty good if anyone has any.
No, that's good. I mean, a lot of them are just key issues that, you know, have to be there. have to be there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The next one here.
What do you want to do now?
We're on, yeah, D, and I think we're okay here.
Yeah, we beat that pretty hard the other night.
Okay. Oh, and I have to change the letters. Okay, I'll do that. But how about the next one, conflict resolution? I think we're okay.
Yeah, it's pretty self.
Sorry. That looks good.
I think G and H are probably okay. And maybe I too.
Pretty good last time.
Yeah. Yep, that's fine. J is good.
Mm-hmm.
K. Which K, we've already been doing that.
Right.
Um, L. That just gives us some guidance if and when we do go to section L.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's pretty self-explanatory. M.
That's good.
Yep.
Yeah, that's very good. N. That's pretty cut and dry.
And then I think, yeah, the last one. All right. So it was just that one. Great.
Right. Very good job, Leslie.
Thanks, Les.
Did an excellent job on it.
It was, really, but.
Well, you, you did it. You put it together. We just threw our two cents in.
All right, so I'll clean up the, um, the numbers and letters and then this should be all set, I think.
Okay. Um, I know I'd like, I've asked this question to Brett before. I don't think it's really necessary that we have to do this at the, uh, town meeting, but to have it voted in, but I think it'd be just to let them know that we had town meeting to get on the warrant that we have come up with guidelines.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know what the time, I still would think we, you know, we don't have to vote on it tonight. Uh, cause I still, I don't know if Brett has left the meeting yet or not, because he said he had to leave. Um, I think we still got time next month to vote on it and get it on town, on the warrant for town meeting in June. Or would everybody, uh, others, the group comfortable with voting on it tonight? Or would you rather wait another month?
Leslie, you want to clean it up before we vote, vote on it?
Yeah, I'm doing that right now.
Okay.
Okay. So John, any more new lambs?
No more new lambs. Just a bunch of yous out there lounging around saying, oh, must be time this weekend.
Four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, no. Probably because I have the cameras now, they won't do anything.
All right, I think all the letters are fixed and I deleted that section.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. So. With that, does anybody want to entertain a motion?
Um, I make a motion, we may, um, we vote on the ag mission guideline.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have our agricultural work plan. Yes.
Yay.
Um, very good.
I have an amendment. No.
John, please. Um, next order of business, any new business tonight?
I know this isn't new business. We've talked about it before. And then we, now that we've got our work plan all done, we need to start thinking about, not bylaws, but, um, as an example, I have a, to a neighbor, uh, fight because his chickens keep on coming in his yard and the, you know, kind of thing.
Okay.
You know, parameters of how to keep animals and that kind of stuff. I know people like to free range, but they have to understand they can't free range the neighborhood. And I have nothing to back me up to say you can't do that at this point.
So Stacy, are you looking for recommendations from the ag commission?
Recommendations and something the ag commission can put together because right now you're sort of our, we're the mediator in between a farmer and the next door neighbor or whatever. And throughout this pandemic, now everybody I think in town has chickens or has picked up goats or whatever. And not really thought about long-term plans. So we need to be able to have something to, if somebody comes to me, and people come to me all the time and say, well, I'm buying this part of this parcel of land and I was told I could put this, this and this on it. And I go, nope, you can only put this on it.
Right.
So we need, you know, we need something that says, okay, a cow needs X amount of land and goats need this amount, you know, kind of thing. I'm pretty good with the horses because they understand that, but, you know, well, I looked in such, such and such a place and this is what it says. And I can't say, well, the town recommends because we don't recommend at this point. Just I recommend.
Okay, because that would fall under section F, but we don't have any, you know, and that's something that I think we have to work on now is, Stacy, I don't know if the state has recommendations.
Well, not specific recommendations, believe it or not. I mean, there's.
I mean livestock, you know, you know, you know, your livestock goes on somebody's property and does damage. You as the owner are liable, so you're supposed to keep your animals off of other people's property. If that's.
Well, this is, this is true unless you say they're not mine, which is what happened with pigs that caused a lot of damage up on, um, not Miller's Lane, Anderson Drive, that.
Yeah.
People said they're not mine, they're not mine. I can guarantee I know where they came from because I was on the property two days later.
Right.
And they still didn't claim them. So, you know, it's hard to get money from a farmer and I, most farmers, if their cows get out or whatever and go on somebody's lawn, yes, they do pay for that. But we've got to have some kind of guideline somewhere and the state doesn't say if you have, like we ran into over on Bailey Street, if you have a cow, you need to have this amount of acreage or this amount of this. And I think as an ag commission and we want people to come in and be able to have animals, we need some guy, kind of guidelines for them because they can't go to the state for the guidelines because they really don't have them.
Right.
And there's no guidelines, but there are recommendations. And I think many months ago, um, I think I had showed you Stacey, like a little handbook that basically we could use to kind of make our own. I'll find that again. But that did have a lot of recommendations for livestock particularly. And, um, so I guess my only question to you is that if, so how would this work if, if the ag commission says adopts recommendations? How does that work for you now implementing them? Do they have to be adopted by the town? In order for you to be able to implement?
No, because I mean, like the Board of Health has, they're not called recommendations, they're not called bylaws. What are they called? The, something that the, the Board of Health puts into place, they have to read three times, puts into place. And they don't need to be voted on by the town, but can be implemented by that board or by the person that they recommend it, uh, implement them. They've done it a couple of times with things for me.
Okay, so if we come up with recommendations, um, you could certainly, we could go through the process and then eventually you could certainly implement them.
Yes.
That you're having. Okay.
Yes, yes.
And then the other thing I would say, if, if there are, so like you brought up an example of the chicken owners, um, you know, maybe invite them to our next meeting and we can certainly discuss it with them if, if that's the stage that they're at, unless, you know, if there's some sort of resolution that we can do.
Yes, we're at the stage that they haven't listened to me. They don't listen to the neighbors and it comes down to a lot of my job is neighbor problems, not so much animal problems.
Right.
And I think this is more of a neighbor problem than it is an animal problem, but the animals are the reason that they can make it a problem.
Exactly.
So, um, I did say that, I did tell the gentleman that was calling that I would talk to the ag commission and see if we could try to set it something up to make a resolution. I don't know if it will work because the guy next door is kind of snotty, but, you know, we could, we can always try. It's just he likes to free range his chickens and he only lets it out at a certain time of day, which is when these people during the summer want to be outside. So, neighbor problem.
And I think is, I mean, there is definitely recommendations from the state about keeping your livestock on your own property. Um, I can link that up and try to find that, but I think there definitely is, um, something else about keeping your livestock on your own property. Because technically, I mean, if they roam on his property and his, say, dog or whatever.
Right.
Then, um, I don't, you know, the farmer doesn't have, or the chicken owner doesn't have any right to that now.
Correct.
Understand. Yeah, for the safety of his own animals, he probably should, um, you know, keep them. But we can certainly try to resolve that issue.
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, so if the next meeting, if you can find that information and I don't know if you want to invite those people then, or you want to invite them the meeting after, so we could go over some of these recommendations prior. I don't know if that would be the smart thing to do.
Yeah, maybe we'll, I won't do it unless I get more calls.
Okay.
Talk, talk to both of them. Um, he hasn't called me back, but it's been kind of, the weather's been kind of yucky, so I don't think they've been outside as much.
Right.
So, um, I have a feeling come springtime and come summer, this one, this is going to be a big problem.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what we can plan. That's one of the key items in the next meeting of our agenda is to see if we can figure out some recommendations or, uh, for these, for these issues. Um, any other problems, Stacy?
No, mostly dog problem. I do have a, I did have a cruelty case, but it has, you know, that's.
Been taken care of.
Well, it's hasn't been taken care of. It's, it's going to be ongoing, unfortunately. Beautiful, beautiful horse farm in town and she just can't keep the idiots off her property. So, but everything else is dog related, like, so.
All right. Any other new business or old business? Okay, any correspondence?
I haven't received any other than the email that I sent out to everybody.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the January 19th meeting.
I'm moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now I guess the next thing is looking for a motion. Motion two.
To set our next meeting?
Oh, yes. Hello. I'm using my phone. I'm not using the laptop tonight, so I don't have my calendar in front of me. I'm in trouble. So that will be March, be what, the second or third Tuesday?
The third Tuesday in March.
March 16.
March 16.
Again, the same as February, March 16.
Okay. Okay, everybody good with that? Seven o'clock. All right, now, but we have our motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.